Okay, it's six o'clock on Thursday, September the 23rd, and I'd like to call to order the City Commission meeting at the City of Carabel. And if Commissioner Tal Allen will please give us the prayer, and then we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this opportunity to come tonight and concern for the issues that come before our city. And we're thankful for the presence of each and every one in our audience tonight. And we trust that things will be carried out in order, that we might accomplish the best thing, best thing that's possible, the best thing, what's best for this lovely city we have. We'd also, at this time, like to thank you for the service of Officer Craig Kincaid, and to whom we have here tonight, which we understand will be his last time with us and on our force. We believe that he has left a legacy, and the training that has been accomplished will serve us well in future days of our city. We ask you to be with our country, Father, in its times of distress and the concerns around the world, that those that in leadership positions might remember that you are the ruler of all things, and that you sit on the throne whom serve you will. Be with us in tonight, that we sit here as we sit in these seats, and we might use proper judgment and wisdom in determining those things that come before us. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, may I have approval of this September 3rd, excuse me, it's not the September 3rd meeting, it's the August 5th meeting minutes. September 3rd, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm nervous, and even though I've talked to each one of you personally many, many times, I'm still nervous. It's my first meeting as mayor, so please work with me. So can I get approval of the September 3rd meeting?
I look to approve.
Okay. All approve of that? Okay, and the September 3rd meeting minutes are approved. And we have public comment tonight. I know representative here from the Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program is here to make a presentation. Would you like to go ahead and do that now?
Of course.
Very good.
I assume you can hear me, don't need the microphone. Everybody, okay. Thank you City of Carabel Commission for allowing me to present this important grant to your community. I am Joshua Hoffman, Park Manager at St. George Island State Park. The Department of Environmental Protection is proud to administer a program called the Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program. This program is a competitive grant program that funds the acquisition or development of lands for public outdoor recreational use. This year, we are very proud that we were able to invest more than $5.4 million in 110 development projects throughout Florida. Today, I have the honor of presenting to you and your community a Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program grant check for $100,000 for the Sands Park Phases Two and Three. This funds will pay for new picnic facilities, exercise trail, renovation of the playground, a fishing pier, picnic facilities, landscaping, new restrooms, grant writing, administration, engineering, and a property survey. Congratulations on this grant award, and I look forward to joining you again as we celebrate progress on this project. And may I take a photo with you all with the check? Yeah, oh, of course, with a fine-looking group like this, how could you with you?
Shouldn't you come around?
Could I come around there? Thank you. With the U. Thank you all very much. Congratulations.
contracts, and I was just waiting for this presentation. I've discussed it with the city attorney, excuse me, the city administrator, and she's ready to help and assist with administering the grants and the projects, so I'm going to go ahead and sign those agreements tonight, in the morning. I'm going to move on to the next item, which would be Commissioner's report. And Commissioner Walden, do you have anything to report today?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, and Commissioner Matthews?
I have none.
All right. Commissioner Matthews?
Yes, I met with the fire chief and assistant chief this past week, and they took eight different calls, the first responders and the fire department, they took eight different calls this past month, and every month they'll give me an agenda or, you know, a report, what are they responding to and everything, and they do a good job to be a volunteer fire department. So, and that should be about it.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Thank you for meeting with him. It's a big thing. And Commissioner Allen?
Nothing to get, I have met with Miranda, and we've found over some financial issues, and mainly questions and explanations, and I'm looking forward to more of that, so I can get up to speed on looking at the financial situations in our city. The other thing is, if I seem to be exceedingly short tonight, I'm having that sinking feeling, this chair will not stay up.
My old chair, I got this one.
Well, you broke it, didn't you? Anyway, so, other than that, that's why I'm looking forward to serving in terms of this stuff. Thank you.
Okay, and I have a little bit of an extensive report, but I'm going to try to move through it fast because we have some excitement going on tonight here, as we all see our entire police forces here, we're very proud of them. You look wonderful.
Thank you.
I just want to establish some meeting guidelines, so y'all will know what to expect from me. I've already reviewed it with the city attorney, and I have some to pass out. Commissioner Allen. It's just real quick, it's for the board members and the audiences, and I'm asking that you turn off or turn your volume down on your cell phones. I'm asking the commission board members not to use their cell phones or text message during the meetings. I ask that one person at a time has the floor to speak. We want everyone to be able to hear each speaker. Please give the speakers your full attention. No sidebar conversations by the board members or audience members when we're in session here. We want everyone who wishes to speak to have the opportunity to speak. Audience members, please let the chairperson know you would like to speak by raising your hand. And audience members, when you do come to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, use the microphone, and, you know, so we can hear you, so everyone can hear you, and so that your comments can be recorded. Board members, you know, kind of let the chairperson know that you'd like to speak. Everyone speak up and use the microphones for everyone's benefit, so we can all hear. We get a lot of complaints that we can't hear what you're saying. Everyone try to make your comments brief, concise, and clearly expressed, so we can hear from as many people as possible. Stay on subject. If you get off subject, one of us will let you know. And I'm asking that we all work towards stability during each meeting. Be polite and courteous to each other. Let's have no discussion regarding other characters or reputation, just keep that outside of our meeting room if we can. Audience members, please hold your question until the end of board discussion. Your question may be answered during discussion. And we all encourage feedback and questions, input from the board and staff and the audience, so we want everyone to participate. And if a procedural step is overlooked, like for instance, if I forget to call for a vote, I'm asking staff to please point that out to me, and we'll move forward. I just want to let all of the, I want all the board members to feel comfortable. I want to let all of you know that in 2014, a Florida statute was passed regarding ethics training, and beginning January 1st, 2015, all elected municipal officers must complete four hours of ethics training each year. And this ethics addresses the Code of Ethics for Public Officers, and if you haven't had the training this year, you can schedule it with Keisha. I want to tell all the board members that the entire administrative staff, including the city attorney, is ready to assist you and answer your questions. And if I have a lot of items to address, at one time, I found it best to schedule an appointment with Keisha, Courtney, or Dan, and they're ready then, they'll be ready to give their undivided attention to you. If you'd like business cards with the city logo, Miranda can do those for you. I'd ask the staff to please provide all the commissioners with an updated current phone list of your supervisors and department supervisors, the police officers, and all the important numbers, and email addresses if you happen to have a list of those. I would like to direct staff to please be sure to update the commissioners' names on the city letterhead, website, and Facebook page. And I've requested the clerk to provide all of us a copy of the attorney's invoice for each regular meeting agenda. Now, the city has a new website, many of y'all have noticed it, and it doesn't contain a documents menu right now. I don't know if we're going to have a documents menu. I've talked with Keisha about it. We want to get some documents posted up there. Right now, there's a link where you can request documents, but if you have any suggestions of certain documents that you'd like to see posted there, please let Keisha know. I want to tell the board members that the city has a legislative budget request application from Senator Monford's office, and the deadline to submit that application is November the 30th. If you have suggestions, let Courtney know. Generally, projects under $1,000, $100,000 have a higher possibility of being awarded. And then the city also has a community development block grant opportunity, and the CDBG project must be completed within the city limits, and it requires a $25,000 matching fund. And we've had very preliminary discussions with Mr. Fred Fox and with Inovia engineers earlier this week, and I'm going to ask Mr. Russell Large to come back on the November 5th meeting and to give us a more thorough explanation of the criteria and maybe suggestions of a few projects that would qualify. And we can also discuss this at the CRA meeting on October the 13th. We've got a lot of work ahead of us the next few months. Some of the items have been placed on the back burner because of Mayor Mester's illness and the two interim commissioners, but it's time to get to work, so you'll see a lot of different items come up. We're just going to do the best we can, and I'd like to move right into the staff report, and that would be Mr. Russell Large.
Mayor, I'd like to make a request. Could you make us copies of all of that? I could not write fast enough to keep up with that.
Yes, I can give you a copy, and I'll give Keisha a copy.
I think we all need it.
Okay.
They'll be included in the minutes.
Okay, good.
Okay. Anyone else?
All right, thank you. Russell Large, Inovia. Just to give you a brief update on some of the projects ongoing in the city. The Avenue B resurfacing project, the Milliny resurfacing operations are complete. Temporary strapping has been installed, and the permanent strapping will be installed after a cure period of two weeks. Contractor's been notified to repair some damage to the existing curb and to side disturbed areas, and other items that he needs to repair. There is also a Northwest Florida Water Management District water project grant. That application is due end tomorrow. We've coordinated with the city and public works department heads. That grant application will be submitted tomorrow. The project under that grant is a new water supply well to replace well number three. That well is pumping sand, which is a sign of failure in that well. So, it still functions, but, and it will continue to function, but over time, it will fail. So, the amount of that grant application is approximately $400,000. I do have some information on the CDBG grant, and I will come back at the November meeting with additional details, but just to give a quick update on that, the grant cycle will open in January 2016, and the applications will be due the 1st of March 2016. The dollar amount that's available for the City of Carabel is up to $650,000. It does, to be competitive, it will require a $25,000 matching funds. Multiple projects can be submitted under this grant program, with, under a single So, we'll coordinate that between now and next meeting, and we'd like to get some input from the commission in terms of projects that you may suggest, and we'll develop our list as well, and then we'll get together and prioritize that list.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Large?
I have one question, and I didn't realize that multiple projects could be submitted, so say, a project on the north side of town and a project on the west side, two completely different projects.
Yes. Now, not to introduce confusion, but there are two categories. There's a neighborhood category and a community category, and the grant application has to be one or the other. So, the projects need to be all neighborhood improvement projects or all community projects under those categories. All right, and if I've got a memo, then I'll pass out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to be here tonight with you all, and I have given you a copy of our written report, and I just wanted to go over a couple of things. One of the things that we've, that the Waterfront Partnership accomplished this last month was our ninth annual coastal cleanup, part of the International Coastal Cleanup. And we had 31 volunteers this year, including the mayor and Commissioner Allen, and all of us together managed to pick up 1,040 pounds of garbage, trash, and floating debris. And we were hampered by the fact that it was a high tide, and it's, the high tides have been so high lately that we were not able to clean up around the pavilion and along the wall there, except by using canoes. So, we had several people, a couple people bring canoes and do that, but it was not quite as good around there as it normally is because of the tides. We had quite a, the county as a whole had an amazing amount of tonnage of garbage and debris and floating stuff that got taken out of the, out of the watershed, so we're so happy to have that done. I wanted to let you know that we are continuing working on the management plan for McKeesee Beach. We've actually identified an individual who has experience writing these plans, and I don't believe we're going to have to write and get a grant to hire somebody. I think we're going to be able to get it done with this person that we've identified. And we were encouraged by the DEP folks to consider applying for a coastal partnership initiative on behalf of the city. One of the drawbacks to that, those grants would be wonderful, and we could use it to write the plan, we could use it to do any kind of improvements at some point. Because we don't know what the improvements might be at this point, it's a little premature to do that, so perhaps next year it would be a great thing to do with the Coastal Partnership Initiative Grant. But it does, that grant does require a match, and we just didn't feel, based on where we are with the project, we would probably end up having to come up with either, well, it would require a match of about $50,000, which could be done through actual time and effort done by volunteers and city staff and so forth, more so that, I mean, obviously, we're not going to match it with $50,000 of cash. But sometimes, in the past, we've used some CRA money and used some other things to piece it together, but our feeling is that we need to get the plan written before we start funding things to carry out the plan. So, we've backed off on trying to get a CPI grant for this year, but I do think it's a good option for next time. Another project that we actually started working on back in 2007 and '08 was getting rid of derelict vessels in the river and around town, and we couldn't get a grant at that point. We were too small. But now that we have a sunken shrimp boat at the dock and those other small boats that are out in the middle of the river, there's a better chance that we'll qualify for a derelict vessel grant from either the FWC or from the Department of Environmental Protection. So, we're working on that. The deadlines probably, we don't know when the deadlines are, truthfully, but they usually are about in the fall. So, we're working on finding out about those, which one is the best one for us to apply for, and does it require match? And if so, are there options? So, we're working on those things. So, those are the two major activities. As you know, we've also got, those are just the activities of the environmental team. The historic team runs the museum as well as does historical projects, and we, on September 12th, we put on an event for, over at the Senior Center called the Early People of Forgotten Coasts, where we particularly addressed the British and French colonial period here in the area. It was very interesting, and I think the most interesting part was the man who's the expert in the black powder weapons, that had all of his match locks and plant locks and breech loaders and all those different guns and tools and all that there, and it was, even though it was pouring rain, we had a very nice attendance. We did this month also participate in a meeting at the state level with the Department of Historic Preservation for a small matching grant to, for Phase Three renovations of Old City Hall. Our project was ranked 34th out of 54 that were recommended for funding, and so whether we get funded or not just has to do with how much money the legislature puts into that pot. There have been years when we were, that those, that level of, that those projects at that level got funded, and there have been years when they didn't. So, we'll continue to work with Monford's office and Beshear's office to see if we can encourage them to get us. They've been very, very good about historical projects. And then the other thing, the last thing, is just to let you know that Holiday on Harbor is coming up. It's December 12th this year, and we're working with the Chamber of Commerce and to make it the best one we've had. They're working on the boat ramp, the boat parade, and we're working on the Santa Claus. We've got Santa Claus all lined up, except for talking to Mr. Hartman about his usual gift of candy canes for the children, which he's been so generous to do all these years. And this year, we're lucky that the Read a Book Franklin, which is a volunteer organization, is donating books for all the children that come to see Santa Claus. So, we've got that going on, and we'll be having some food vendors and other things to try to enhance, enhance what's going on this year again. So, our next meeting, and you're always welcome to our meetings, it's, meets, we meet October 14th at 3:00 at the Lightbird, and we're always interested in new members of the Waterfront Partnership Committee, and if you, anyone is interested, please just get with me, and we'll be glad to get you involved. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tamara. And then Mr. Butler with the Economic Development Council.
Request the boards amending our bylaws, so instead of meeting monthly, we'd like to move to meeting quarterly. We'll meet on the 1st of each month, this being October 1st of this quarter.
Do we need to have a motion for that, Mr. Monford?
Yeah, no, instead of meeting monthly, just meet quarterly.
That's fine. I would think that's within your, I would think that would be something within your purview.
With your concurrence.
It's fine. You think you have better?
Well, we could, I mean, it's just a recommendation board. If something comes up, then we'll always be able to, comes a member of the public.
Or if you need to meet, an extra meeting, you can call for a special meeting.
Yeah, very informal, yes. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Hartman, do you have anything to report?
Nothing beyond, I think you've already covered it, as far as the new commissioners in particular. If you have questions, you'll be getting paperwork from the state, sometimes on financial disclosure, that sort of thing, feel free to, that's what I'm here for, to bounce any questions out, or anything like that, so happy to help any way I can.
Okay, we have a public hearing now regarding a resolution, a comprehensive emergency plan resolution. Do you, would you like for me to read it? You're welcome to read it. They've heard me enough right now.
Resolution 07-2015, whereas Chapter 252 Florida statutes assigns to the Board of County Commissioners responsibility for disaster preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation, and whereas being prepared for disasters means being ready to respond properly as danger threatens to save life and protect property and to provide relief from suffering and privation, and whereas local services may be overburdened or inadequate, and local government will have to operate effectively in different ways than in normal times to provide timely relief and minimize hardships in the event of natural and technological disasters in Franklin County, and whereas many populated areas and parts of communities may require evacuation, shelter, and food until the disaster ends, services are restored and needed supplies and materials are available. And whereas this plan is intended to provide the framework for development of detailed operating procedures for all county forces charged with responsibility of protecting the public safety and health from natural and technological disaster, and whereas Chapter 9G-6 of the Florida Administrative Code requires each county to develop a comprehensive emergency management plan, and whereas 9G-6 Florida Administrative Code furthermore requires the governing body of Franklin County adopt by resolution the Franklin County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, now therefore be resolved by the City of Carabel as follows, that Franklin County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is hereby adopted, and assumes that the county's asking us to participate and support the management.
They are. Pam Brown supplied the resolution, and the executive summary was circulated, and this emergency management plan has to be updated this year. The Franklin County Board of County Commissioners has to approve the resolution as well as both municipalities, so is there any other discussion, or is there any other questions?
I would like to add to that, if I may, please, of course. On October 26th, there will be a meeting at EOC. It's called ES 191, and it has to do with the chain of command in emergency situations, which generally goes for everything, but this will be specifically designed for emergency operations for the community. operations for the community. And it's a public meeting, everybody can attend. If you're interested in doing it, let Pam Brownell over at the EOC know. Thank you.
And that would be good for the commissioners to attend. I've, I've taken a couple of short courses on that and I plan to attend it. What, what time is that? Should I campaign?
I couldn't tell you right now. I think it's almost an all day or four. Pardon?
There is going to require FEMA classes that board will have to take as well.
Right.
Okay, so, may I have a motion then to adopt this resolution?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 07-2013.
Okay, and a second for that?
Oh, second.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey and a second by Commissioner Allen. All approved?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Any, any disapproved? All right, so, it's passed then. Thank you very much. All right, we have new business now. The first item is to appoint a mayor pro temp. And I, that would be done by the commissioners. And I just want to go ahead and just read you from the code or the charter, that the, the five commissioners shall select one of their number exclusive of the mayor commissioner, who shall act as mayor pro temp. Which mayor pro temp, when selected by a majority vote of the commissioners voting, shall have all the powers and duty of the mayor commissioner in the absence from the city of the mayor or commissioner or his inability to act. So, we all learned earlier this summer now, an absence is different than a vacancy. So, if there's a vacancy, then we would, this commission would have to appoint a, a mayor to serve. But for now, we need a mayor pro temp to serve in the event of my absence, so, do we have...
I make a motion for Commissioner Mathis, since he does have the seniority.
That would be Commissioner Massey.
Still a no.
You decline?
I decline.
Is there a second for that, even though?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Gallow.
I'll second that.
All right, so, then the first motion died for lack of a second, and the Commissioner Walden has, Commissioner Walden has motion for Commissioner Cal Allen to be mayor pro temp with a second by Commissioner Massey. All those approved?
Aye.
Okay, any disapproved? And I approve also, so, that motion passes. Commissioner Cal Allen is the mayor pro temp. All right, and then, next, the next item is to approve or disapprove a beer and wine license for Hometown Deli. Now, they, when it was, this is a different owner now, is that, is that the issue? So, they had a carryout beer and wine license, Hometown Deli had that until it changed ownership. So, now, they have to apply for their own license. So, is there any discussion on that?
No, I make a motion to give them their beer and wine license.
Okay, so, Commissioner Massey has made the motion. All right, and Commissioner Mathis has seconded. All approved?
Aye.
Okay, I approve. Any, any disapproved? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. And then, item three is to appoint a police chief, since our, our beloved Chief Kincaid is retiring, or has retired now, yesterday was his last day. So, I believe it's 11 days short of having nine years. So, before we appoint the, the new police chief, we have a special presentation for Chief Kincaid. And Deputy Hunnings, do you want to go first, or would you like, okay, Court is going to make her presentation first?
We have a plaque for Chief Kincaid. Since presented to Chief Craig Kincaid, 2006 to 2015. In sincere gratitude for the assistance, guidance, and outstanding leadership you provided our department for so many years, you have set an example to be followed and cherished by those of us that were fortunate enough to have experienced in ourselves.
It's my honor and privilege to be your chief of police, folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, you've done excellent job.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Chief, don't sit down yet.
On July 7th, 2015, at 10:52 a.m., Chief Craig Kincaid was dispatched to Ave. 11, Tallahassee Street, Carabel, reference to a house fire. Upon arrival, Chief Kincaid saw heavy smoke coming from the chimney, windows, and knees of the house. It was unknown at the time if anyone was inside the house. Crawling on the stomach, Chief Kincaid entered the burning house. They started searching bedrooms. They discovered a young female in one of the rooms lying in the bed asleep, unaware that the house was on fire. He was able to awaken her and get her out of the burning house safely. She was later identified as Kelsey Stewart. Chief Kincaid continued searching the rest of the house for other possible occupants or exit of the house. On behalf of the City of Carabel and the Carabel Police Department, it is a great honor to present Chief Craig Kincaid with a medal of valor. For his actions above and beyond the call of duty, his behavior in exceptional courage and extraordinary decisiveness, and a presence of mind and unusual quickness and actions regardless of his personal safety. Want to come forward and say the word?
Thank you, Daddy's here.
May I say one?
First of all, I'm an attorney, I've been in practice for about 28 years, and first of all, I want to tell you, Chief Kincaid's professionalism and his job has been outstanding. But as a father, Chief Kincaid, you saved my daughter's life. I'll be forever thankful to you. I will never forget that day. And Kelsey would be here, she's off in college now, she's an A student, and she and I both thank you. And I wanted to give you this picture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for this award. All these medals that you see on my uniform came from somewhere else. I ended up a highly decorated officer on the department that I came from without ever intending to be one. I think medals are kind of, sometimes difficult to accept, especially with the life-saving medal, which I've been given twice up there, because I've lost so many people, I've had so many people die on me, that you just remember them sometimes. I've been in about 50 burning buildings up there, it averaged about two a year, first on the scene before the fire department. Sometimes I could crawl in on only hands and knees, sometimes on my stomach. Once in a while, I could be on my feet. Sometimes I could get to the people, sometimes I couldn't. A lot of times, there was nobody in there. So, I was surprised to find somebody in that house on Tallahassee Street, and I'm glad I was able to get her out of there and that she's alive today. Thank you very much, folks.
I, I attended a luncheon on Monday, and I, I didn't realize how much the chief is going to be missed by not only the citizens, but the Carabel Police Department, the Franklin County Sheriff Department, the fire departments, the EMS, the FWC officers. But there may be a few folks that won't miss him, but those are few and far between. But the chief has set a fine example for all of us, and he leaves us with big shoes to fill, and we wish the chief the very best in his new life and retirement in the Lone Star State.
If you weren't leaving town, you could join our surf team.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Anyone from the audience? Okay, then we'll move forward to appoint a police chief. So, we have, all of us, I believe, we've all received six letters of referral, and then we've had verbal high recommendations of Chief Kincaid. And then, on Monday afternoon, I had high recommendations of verbal from Sheriff Mike Mock. And I did speak with Chief Bobby Barnes of Appalachia Cola personally by phone. And all of the recommendations in the letters and the verbal recommendations were all high recommendations for Deputy Gary Hunnings. So, then, if anyone else has anything to say, please do.
Just thank Deputy Hunnings, he's done a bad job, which he is our assistant chief also. So, he's done, he's done a great job.
I find him very cooperative, willing to work with us, and I certainly would recommend it. In fact, I'll move to appoint.
And I think, are we going to do assistant chief tonight?
I think Gary's going to ask for that, yes.
Okay, all right. So, then, we have a motion for Deputy Gary Hunnings to be promoted to Chief Gary Hunnings. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, that's the motion by Commissioner Cal Allen and second by Commissioner Massey. All approved?
Aye.
Any, any disapproved? Okay, so, the motion passes.
Well, thank y'all for appointing me as police chief. First off, I'd like to ask for the Sergeant Cardwell to be promoted to deputy chief for this time. And also, move Officer Gene Anderson to a full-time position. He's now a part-time, that seems to be moved to a full-time.
Yes, please, ma'am, please do.
But anyway, the chief, each, everybody, I want y'all to know that Amber, Officer Cardwell, she does a good job with the city police department. She does almost all the paperwork for them. Am I correct, chief?
Quite a bit, yeah. She works my back home with the criminal investigations, and day shift has more paperwork than night shift. But each officer handles his own workload. She handles more of it because day shift with paper is much more busy.
So, I want to make a motion to appoint her assistant chief.
I will second that.
Okay, and then, I would just like to have a little discussion. I would say that she does have excellent organizational skills and can make some mighty fine caramel pecan cupcakes. Thank you. But yes, she, she has, Officer Cardwell has high recommendations, and Gary Hunnings will need a deputy and an assistant. So, we have a motion and a second, all approved?
Aye.
And any disapproved? So, that motion passes to promote Sergeant Cardwell to Deputy Amber Cardwell.
I think we made a perfect choice.
I'd just like to say, I've been serving the city of Carabel since 2011. As many of you know, I'm a citizen of Carabel, born and raised my whole life. When I finished the police academy, I held out for two years. I applied with other agencies and was actually pushed through the process of hiring with other agencies, but I had already made it up my mind that if I was going to serve a community, I wanted it to be my community. I'm dedicated to my department, I'm dedicating to spending the rest of my career with my department. I feel like I'm thankful for everything Chief Kincaid has taught me. I wouldn't be the officer I am today if it weren't for him. But I don't view our police department as just a security or personnel, you know, to serve the citizens. I view us as a family. And so, I'm honored to be a part of this family. Thank you.
All right, then, with the retirement of, of Chief Kincaid, that leaves an open position. So, then, we, you are requesting that we promote from part-time to full-time Officer Anderson.
I've also worked with Officer Anderson firsthand. I don't want him to leave. I do not want him to leave the Department of Corrections, but I know he wants to move up in his career, and he's an excellent, excellent officer, has high integrity, and I make the motion to have him full-time.
Second, Matt, motion.
Okay, then, we have a motion by Commissioner Massey and a second by Commissioner Mathis. Do all approve?
All aye.
Any, any disapproved? Okay, then, the motion passes. So, then, we hired Gene Anderson, Officer Gene Anderson, as full-time. This is a big day for the Carabel Police Department, I'm proud of all of you, thank you for your service, thank you.
Thank you.
So, then, final on the agenda is a, we need a motion to approve the attorney's bills. Can we have that? Is there any discussion?
I make a motion to approve?
All right, then, second, is there a second to approve the attorney's?
I don't know.
I'll second that.
All right, then, is there any discussion? Commissioner Allen, is there any discussion?
I guess not.
Okay, all right, then, we have a motion by Commissioner Walden and second by Commissioner Massey. All approved?
Aye.
Okay, any disapproved? Okay, so, that motion passes. Does anyone else have anything else to say? Any of the board members have anything to say?
Why, you're not going to be able to make motions. I guess I'll take a place for you.
I'll have to nudge somebody. I've got Commissioner Mathis here, I'll nudge him.
Yeah.
Just one, just, just one more thing. I saw Jim Brown in the audience, was he, is he here now?
He left.
He left?
No, he left just before he started.
Oh.
I think he was afraid.
Oh, no.
He was, he was very happy and he's doing well.
Okay. All right, then, anything else? Okay, then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion for adjourn.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second.
Who was that saying?
Commissioner Massey and then Commissioner Walden. Okay, approved? Those approve to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any disapproved? All right, then, we're adjourned.